Okay, we are here for the budget hearing. I will call the hearing to order. First purpose of the hearing is to review, discuss, consider, and receive input. Opposition, criticism, suggestions, and observations of the taxpayers relating to the 2019-20 proposed budget.
Zoom here. Just work off the board.
I don't know, I can slide at a microscope, I can see this.
Okay. Budgets that you're gonna adopt tonight. Are the budgets for the general fund depreciation, employee benefits, activities fund, school nutrition, lunch fund, bond, special building, qualified capital purpose, cooperative fund, and student fee fund. The budget document that was in the paper. Matt, do you need something? Yes. Yes. Do you guys wanna help him get some chairs? The first column is the actual column. You've been through a budget hearing, but this is for the benefit of the people in the audience. This is the actual column. The other two are estimations, they're budgeted numbers. So the first column is always gonna be less because you cannot spend more than what you told the public you were gonna spend. So this, these are audited numbers. This is budgeted from last year, this is budgeted from this year, okay? And so you'll see that the general fund has no increase in budget. Depreciation fund has no increase in budget. Employee benefit fund, the same budget. Activities fund, we have more participation. We came pretty close to that budget, however, that activity fund has to generate its money. And so there's, there's an increase in the activities fund for this year. School nutrition fund, budgets have to balance. And so when you have so much cash in your, in your budget, you have to make sure that you put your correct ending balance. And so the only reason for the increase in that one is because we have more cash in our ending balance. And so that one went up. The bond fund. Obviously, we passed the bond. And so we had to put in what the bond payments would be next year. And so it went from five seventy-five to a million six. However, the building fund that had a tax request in it a year ago, that tax request went to zero, and you'll see that in your next hearing. And so when they sold the bonds, the balance in the bond fund, plus the sale of the bonds, we have thirteen million dollars in our account. Qualified capital purpose, this is for the addition at the elementary. Because it is a balloon payment bond, every year it goes up by five hundred thousand to reflect the cash you have. And so the cash that we'll have at the end of the year is about four hundred thirty thousand. And then the co-op funds stay the same. And the student fee fund, we have a bigger balance in there, so obviously cash and expenses have to balance. So basically, trying to control what you're doing, looks like a big increase, but your biggest increase is right there in that building fund, you're building a high school addition. Questions on that? We, we went through it in a, in a budget workshop in greater detail, but this is what was in the paper, and so if you get questions from people.
Good year.
Thoughts? Well, if you're...
Yeah. As you, as you commented, we had the budget workshop at the end of August and kinda went through everything. Having made the adjustments for the previous year, and that helped us get some items bought for the, for this current year and help our, help, help ourselves be, stay or keep our budget consistent with the prior year. So that was, that was a good thing, so.
Do you just need to close that hearing?
Yes.
If there's no questions?
There's no other comments or questions or items for discussion on that? We'll close that hearing. We'll move on to the levy setting hearing. Call that to order. Purposes to review, discuss, consider, receive input, and hear support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, and/or observations of taxpayers relating to the 2019-20 proposed property tax levy.
This was in the paper, and as advertised, general fund, this changed a little bit from a year ago in that this was our district valuation a year ago, this is our district valuation this year. It went down just a little bit less than, I mean, it says zero percent because that's what it rounds to. But I think it's like four one-hundredths of a cent or of a, of a percent difference. So it's zero percent. Our tax request, our operating budget last year was twenty-one. Our operating budget this year is the same amount. Our tax request last year was fourteen million ninety-nine thousand. Our tax request this year is the same, fourteen million, so there's no increase. However, you'll see that there's a little bit of an increase from a dollar one-three to a dollar one-four, so a tenth of a cent increase because of the valuation drop. Okay? So, but it's the exact same dollar request. The bond fund. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go down here first. In the past, you'd ask for five hundred five thousand in your building fund because you'd been doing your building projects and pay for, paying for them as you went along. This year, you'll notice that we have no request in the, in the building fund. But that five hundred five thousand went up here, so five hundred and five, now you got a million ten. That's what we told the taxpayers that we would do to get this thing, to get the bond in. So then, this one goes away this year, and this one took off that tax request. This one stayed the same. So you'll see on the bottom. Last year, we asked for a dollar twelve-two total. And because of the valuation, it's a dollar twelve-three. Basically asking for the same money. Is there anything else hidden here? No. This has been in the paper. You know, obviously, we had to advertise it, and so I think it's it's rare that you're not gonna have any tax increase or any dollar request increase, that you're able to work through that, so.
It's pretty rare that you're actually gonna have a valuation that stays almost whatever it was, five hundred thousand dollars.
The valuation was affected in this district because Butler County, south of the river, we lost six million dollars in valuation. But the valuation in Colfax County went up five, I think four-point-some billion, so it was a little over a million dollars difference in in valuations between Butler and Colfax. But Colfax County made that difference. And so the land that we lost in the flood across the river, that's no longer, or that is not taxed for farmland, or was, that's what I anticipated it was. Because when you see that big of a drop, and I know that, that that was the option for people who own that land, to request a reevaluation. So there was six million dollars in Butler County that went down.
Any other comments, questions? We'll close the hearing. Get out of my mic.
I know, I feel bad.
We'll call the meeting to order. Skyler Community Schools, in partnership with its parents, students, and the community, is committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in a global society. Notice the meeting was given in advance, according to state law, by giving notice of meeting to the public. Notice that the meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Meeting has been preceded by a vast notice and hereby declared to be an open session, copying the Open Meeting Act as posted at the front of the meeting room. I will entertain any motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Moving seconded.
I just wanna call your attention to the summary report for receipts and expenditures. And you'll notice that our expenditures came in for the year right at what we had budgeted for. The receipts, however, are down a little bit, under what we had projected. But the only area that was low was from the federal government. We've only received thirty-five percent of our federal dollars. And so we've submitted all of our requests, we've spent the money because that's a, you have to spend it and then request it. And so we do have sixty-five percent of the federal money, which we haven't gotten yet. So that will take care of that gap. Because every time when I try to guess what, how much money we get, because it doesn't all get certified, you have to kinda estimate on what you think you're gonna get. And I'm always really careful about making sure that I don't overestimate, because it's the fastest way to break a district. In this case, the federal government, we know we have the grants, we know they're sitting there. We've, we've just not received that money yet. So hopefully, you'll see in October, November, you'll start seeing some of that money come in. So, anyway. That's the area that we're low. So if you look at, at the, at the summary, you'll see our taxes are fairly close to what we had anticipated. Taxes are one thing that you don't have to guess on, because that's what you actually request. Okay? You also have to remember that your taxes, you only get eight months of those taxes that you requested because the fiscal year and the tax year don't match. So anything that we were short in taxes are still to be paid this fall yet. Okay? So, look at that summary report, and I think it tells you a pretty, or gives you a pretty good idea of where your revenue is. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you compare the two years that are, or there's several years that you can compare. But if you have any questions on the revenue side, the expenditure side is pretty self-explanatory, but sometimes the revenue can be a little more complex.
With regard to the funds that we've spent or, you know, are expecting with our, from the federal government, so is there, how many times a year do we submit for that? Is that just as we spend, or how's that?
I tell Penny early and often. And so if, if we spend something in that month, she's requesting. Okay? However, last year, some of our federal grants were not approved until almost January, right Dave? They kept rejecting our proposals, and so so all the money that we had spent prior to that in the fall, we, we would have our request in, but we, but we couldn't get any of it. I think the SIG grant, school improvement grant, we've not received one penny off of that yet, and so yeah, so the state holds our money, you know? The federal government, government may give the state the money, but the state will distribute that money when they match the proposal with the request, so. The payment.
You're confident that we will receive the funds?
We've already gotten approval, and we've got our, our grant award approved. So it just happens sometimes.
Checks in the mail.
Yeah, but it's not quite in the mail yet. Checks in their bank.
Yeah.
So anyway, so they changed the deadline for a bunch of the grants this fall, instead of having it be in November, it's already, those grants had to be submitted already. So apparently, they're trying to clean that up a little bit. Anyway. I just wanted to bring your attention to look through that summary, because you can, you can compare years. And you should always, as a board, know where your revenue's coming from, and if you're if you're not getting the revenue that you, you've told the people you're gonna get, you know? You need to watch that. I mean, if, it's my, it's my job to watch it, obviously. As a board, you're gonna want to always know where your money comes from.
See, any other comments, questions?
I did have a question on one check, or I did notice one check, I thought was, was sorta high, and maybe Mr. Kozak can help me on this. Is, I think it was inspection of the high school basketball hoops.
Oh yeah, I can tell you what, what happened there. The cabling for the, for the baskets to be brought up and down, that cable in the frame. And so we, we, we brought a company in to, to replace that cabling, because you're not supposed to do it yourself. And when they came in to do that, then the whole safety system on those baskets, because not only is there a cable, but there's also a wedge on it, that if the cable will break, that the wedge catches it. Those were no longer allowed, and so we had to replace not only the cable, but the, but the safety system on them, so.
We just did that not many years ago.
I know, but if they're
Why do they sell us stuff that isn't gonna stand up and isn't gonna pass on down the road? Is this just a, just a money grab, or what?
No, but I think the more that you put your baskets up and down, especially in a gym like that. You know, you put the side baskets up and down a lot more. So, it's a cable phrase.
I understand that. I understand it falling down. But I believe not very many years ago, we had a new system put in, and they guaranteed us that they'd be perfect forever. But apparently not, so.
You know anybody who tells you something's perfect forever, I'd be kinda suspect on that, but I, this, this is my seventh year here, and we've now replaced them since I've been here. And so replacing cabling, we did that
Right before you came.
Okay, right before I came. We, we, we did the recabling at the, at the middle school, I know that, because that also went bad, so.
I, I don't off the top of my head.
Right before it came, don't you think it was? It's alright.
I just saw it was a, yeah, a pretty sizable check for if that's all he was doing was inspecting the high school hoops.
No, he was replacing the cabling and the, and the safety on them.
Alright.
Call the roll.
Okay, I was gonna say, we stop to do that? Roberts?
Yes.
Lanuzza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babachek?
Yes. Alright. Public forum, I know we have a lot of people in the room. Just, again, any comments that need to be made, that we need to limit to five minutes, and so if you have anybody that
If we could have a lot, if you would introduce the people who are here, and, and then they can, but you asked me to put it on the agenda, so.
Well, there's several parents here in the, in the audience today. Thank you for being here. They, they're here because they want to present the check and, of a payment for the bus for the trailer court area. They decided to do it this way because they are grateful for the service. There are seventy, no, fifty-seven students currently using the service. This has impacted their life in a different way. Sometimes it's just time, some of them it's money, some of them is safety. They are really grateful for the service, and they just want to say thank you and make a presence here, you know, just they're not all of them here. We figured that it was gonna be too big of a crowd. But some of them, they decided that they wanted to come just to say thank you for taking in consideration the service, and to show that you know, like, well, they are grateful. And here's, they are gonna present the check, and Isella will translate for them.
Isella, you guys wanna say anything? You can talk.
Si, la malas explique un poco acerca de que están aquí ustedes presentando el cheque el día de hoy. Porque algunos de ustedes han impactado su vida en cuestión de dinero, tiempo, o seguridad de sus hijos. Y que algunos de ustedes decidieron venir el día de hoy para dar las gracias de que la escuela ha cooperado con, con sus familias de esta manera.
Si hay algo que alguno de ustedes quiera decir aparte de lo que estoy diciendo.
She just said that if there, if somebody wants to say something, they can. Just quick and brief.
She's really, well, everybody is very grateful for all the support that the school has given to the, given to them and the kids. She's really grateful for the service because right now she's been saving about over a hundred dollars. She used to pay a hundred and fifty dollars bi-weekly for her three kids coming to school, right? So she's really grateful, and she is not sure how long it's gonna be the service for, but hopefully it's for a long time, because they, they really need it and they really appreciate it.
Yo quería también darle las gracias a ellos. Hablar con la comunidad de Skyler y realmente estar muy agradecido por, por lo que se ha logrado y la verdad de que realmente nunca pensamos que vamos a llegar a, a tener un servicio así, pero les damos las gracias y la verdad que nos han ahorrado tiempo y dinero, la verdad.
He's also grateful because it, you guys have saved them a lot of money and time and concern for the safety of their kids. And they really grateful for you guys hearing them out and helping out that community.
Great.
Gracias.
So really thank you guys for all the support and to whoever started this or approved it. She is really grateful for that, and thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Es una gran ayuda. Again, really grateful for the support. It saves them a lot of time, and, well, they just, they're really thankful for all your help, all your support.
Thank you very much.
Again, I'm glad it's, glad it's working out, and again, we'll continue to monitor the situation, which we've said we would go, look again, make sure it's doing everything.
He wants a picture for the paper.
Keep, keep a hat trick.
This is Sally.
So just say what you said.
Thank you. Alright, any other comments from the community? If not, we'll move on. Student rep. You're hiding down there.
Okay, so there's kind of a lot going on. FFA has taken over the community garden, and so they've just been helping the people down there, keeping it nice and stuff like that. And then they're also having plant sales, so if you're interested in buying plants, talk to one of the, the FFA people. Um, Project S is doing their annual team building day. Yeah. Um, speech, they're selling pizzas from Godfathers. I'm not sure how long that's been going on, but it just started. Band has a competition on the Saturday, the Saturday at Fremont. Stu Co, they're having their new members interviews, and we've chosen three people. We don't know who they are yet. And they're selling Eileen's cookie dough to fundraise. And then cheer. They, we're kind of thinking about doing like a parent's night out, starting with teachers. If any teachers have children, they can drop their children off with us for a few hours, and we'll play with kids, let them watch movies while like the parents can really just hang out. They can have a date night, or they can just not wanna have their kids with them for a little bit.
Can you make it a weekend-long TV?
We're also starting, we're starting to plan little girls' cheer camp, so if you have daughters, feel free to let them cheer with us. Cheerleaders are leading the heart walk that I think is happening next week. And then we decide on a homecoming thing, and it's gonna be Candyland.
Interesting.
Candyland?
Is it all right if I'm excused for one night?
Of course. Thank you for the reply.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for her before she leaves?
Lots happen.
Enjoy. Alright, we'll move on to budget. Budget.
Make the motion to approve the 2019-2020 budget as advertised.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
Thank you, parents.
Thank you. Well, we had the hearing. So we're good with that.
And upon your approval tonight, we have, we need to get this in tomorrow, so it gets there by the twentieth, so.
Any other items to call out on that? Any further questions, something you thought of since the hearing?
Nope.
Alex, call the roll.
Lanuzza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babachek?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes. I just think it's nice, number one, that we're able to keep the budget consistent and be able to keep things in line, so.
You know, when you promised people something a year ago in a, in a whole bond election, and they put their faith in you, you know, you're doing it with a whole lot of blue sky out there, hoping that you can come in where you told them you would. And it, knock on wood, it worked for us. And we'll continue to be vigilant about making sure that we're responsible and how we spend and how we use tax money, but I hope down the road that the state finds some way to find some property tax relief, but it'll be things that we can get involved with, but it's things that happen above us that will give us the greatest relief, so.
Our agenda item is, you know, approving the budget as advertised. It's not, that's not just as advertised in a newspaper, it's as we were advertising it and discussing it through that bond election, and, and to be able to deliver what, like you said, what was promised, that's, that's what we're doing with this budget and this, the levy.
Want to call? Did you call a question?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we're on to the next item.
Levy? The levy resolution.
Yeah.
You don't have to be, because it's published, you don't have to read the whole resolution, you can just make a motion to approve the levy resolution as presented. If someone wants
I will, I will move to approve the levy resolution as presented in the earlier hearing.
Second it.
Discussion?
You've gotta fill out that sheet eventually.
Again, it's good that
Virginia's not
Valuation staying fairly consistent, that's good. We're not having any major swings one way or another. And unfortunately, we did have some loss across the river with the flooding and stuff, which that happens too, which is unfortunate, but again, all in all, pretty pleased where we ended up. If there's no comments, call the roll.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babachek?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lanuzza?
Yes.
Alright. Looks like we're into bargaining unit. Wanna make that motion?
I move to approve the SEA request to be recognized as a sole bargaining agent for the 2122 non-supervisory certificated staff. for the 2122 non-supervisory certificated staff master agreement.
I'll second. Discussion?
Pretty much since we've gone to fall teacher negotiations in order to be recognized, they always put it out a year in advance, so it's pretty standard practice.
So this is for this year, it's for next year?
Yeah, it's for the following.
This is the same group that's been representing the staff or...
Yeah, we don't know. We will represent them this year. They've, they've got a team of negotiators. It's been fairly consistent though, but it may change a few people, I don't know.
I've heard they're written in a tough bunch.
It's always a tough bunch.
Oh, yeah. Call the roll.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babercheck?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Laniza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Make the motion to approve the use of local substitute teachers for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
The reason why you have to take action as a board is because the local sub certificate allows them to sub so many days in a district. Unlike other substitute teachers who can come in and they can plan and they can grade work, they can, they can really assume all the responsibilities of a regular classroom teacher. A local sub cannot take a long-term sub, cannot do the planning. They can carry out those functions because they don't have a full teaching certificate. They have a local sub certificate, which allows them to be able to carry out the lesson plan, but they cannot do what is termed as diagnose and prescribe. So basically, they fill in for a teacher. We have several local subs that we use. They're good in the classroom, but you have to, the board has to know that you're using those types of people who aren't fully credentialed. And we have to make sure that when we put in our substitute teacher report and we use local subs, that we've got to comply with, with the number of days. It's intermittent subbing. It's not back-to-back-to-back, so. If you didn't do it as a group, every time that we would get a local sub application, you'd have to approve each one, which is really pretty cumbersome, so. And we need substitutes and so we encourage our people. I mean, we, we do use local subs. And so it's a pretty important workforce for us.
Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and call the roll, Sally.
Babercheck?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Laniza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Resignation. I move to accept Jennifer Subota's resignation and release her from her 2019-20 contract and wish her well with her new job. Just a second.
We'll second that.
Comments, discussion?
The reason I broke the resignations apart is because now when you accept a teacher's resignation and it's current, first of the current year, you know, you accept the resignation, but you also release them from their contract, okay? In this case, this person was not seeking another job, but was sought out and recruited and talked to her administrators about this opportunity. And when she came back, she got offered an assistant coaching position with Stanford University for a little more money than we were paying her also, but what a career opportunity. And so this is probably a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for somebody to go do that. So we'll work and we will make sure that we get a replacement. I've asked the principals for a report on their, their plan for how they're looking at replacing this position and so I know that they'll be working hard to get that, that position filled. If we don't fill it with a full person between, in the first semester, they already have leads on some teachers who will be graduating in midterm that they could put in for second semester, so I think we'll do the best we can. But our kids shouldn't suffer because we have, because we allow somebody this opportunity. That's what I want to make sure. And as a board that you know, that's a high priority for us, that our kids will be taken care of.
So the question is, what do we need to change so we can do a better job of competing with Stanford? Answer his question.
You know, most of the questions Brian asks, I can, I can kind of respond to. That one is like...
Well, the other thing, I mean, so we, we let her go and, I mean, even if we didn't let her go, she's gonna go. There's, there is no retaliatory or other type of thing we're gonna do because, you know, she's not teaching in the States, we can't hold a license, you know, those types of things. So, you know, we wish her well and anytime where people have a chance to advance, we want to make sure that they have that chance. Unfortunately, it happened at this time of the year rather than, you know, in the spring, et cetera, so we could have a better opportunity to fill it, but, you know, and then wish her, wish her well.
I'd like to just make a comment. I think it's important to know that, number one, she was doing a really good job here teaching, so hate to see her leave on that account. But the other thing to know, she did not sneak this position out through a mutual friend. They sought her out and went and looked at it and it was, it's a great opportunity for her.
This might be a great opportunity, but I would hope that we don't see this happen more and more and more and more because we are opening ourselves up to a precedence that we did it for one, we must do it for all. So it's something that I wish her well and I hope everything goes well for her, but it's not anything that really thrills me about her leaving at this time of the year.
I think we're, we're all in the same, you know. I understand that, but sometimes somebody needs to say it.
Other comments? Sally? Call the roll.
Roberts?
Yes.
Laniza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babercheck?
Yes.
Staff resignations?
I move to accept, support staff resignation and thank her for her service to the district.
I'll second.
Just a comment, we had a food service staff member who got injured this summer, not on our job, but is unable to return to work. And, and so that's why the resignation, you'll see by her letter, that she got injured this summer. That's why the resignation is here.
Any other discussions, comments? Sally, call the roll.
Laniza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babercheck?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
New hire recommendations?
Make the motion to approve new hire recommendations presented.
I will second that.
Kristen Rocha, parent educator at Skyline Middle School. And his position is, is what?
Special education.
Special education.
Call the roll.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Babercheck?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Laniza? Yes.
All right, now we're getting into guaranteed maximum price.
Should we have some discussion on this first before, before a motion is made? I think it's...
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
The reason is because, the reason though we'll have discussion first is because we've been waiting for this document and it came in at three something today. So the board members haven't had a, a time to go ahead and review this document. But a guaranteed maximum price is when you agree to go to the construction method that we have, it's called construction manager at risk. In other words, they have to give you a guaranteed maximum price that they think they can build this building for. And that doesn't mean that that's what the building is gonna cost you. It can be less than that, but it can't be more than that unless for some reason we have what's called a change order in the industry. If I believe that something must, needs to be changed, I don't, we don't like something and we say we'd like this change order, then the change order could be something that the construction company advises. It could be something that we advise, that we don't like, whatever it is, okay? And so if it's something that the construction company wants to change, with your approval on a change order, they can change it. It can be either more or less money. If it's less money, you save money. If it's more money, they have to foot the cost. If it's a change order that we request, it can be a swap. It's a change order that's no difference in price. It can be a change order that reduces our cost or if we requested a change order that increases our cost, goes outside the GMP guaranteed maximum price, okay? And so they've been working to try to get us this guaranteed maximum price, but couldn't get it to us until we got the, the storm sewer issue resolved because we weren't sure what our commitment was gonna be in that. Well, again, the city and the utilities department stepped up, saw some benefits to the city, but that's kind of what was holding our project up was how are we gonna resolve this storm sewer? And so the guaranteed maximum price finally came in, the price at 12.7. The bond is 12.5. A hundred and fifty thousand of it is storm sewer, okay? But that doesn't mean that the building is that, but they didn't feel comfortable going down lower than that. So the guaranteed maximum price that's presented to you today is 12.7, okay? But the seventy-some pages that you got attached to this, to this board agenda this afternoon breaks out all of the subcontractor bids. The subcontractor bids at this point are 1.2 million under that. And so I'm fairly confident because we have those subcontractor bids that, that we can get our pricing. However, they weren't willing to, to lower that guaranteed maximum price at this point. It's like that, that's not uncommon. They'll, that guaranteed maximum price is generally right at your bottom and if they have a reason to go above it. I know of three projects out there where some of them are a million over. One of them's eight hundred thousand over on the guaranteed maximum prices. And so it's, it's not unheard of that they'll gotta stick with that bottom amount. The one thing that actually worked in your favor, and it's also attached here, is that because we're building in a floodplain, you cannot do more than 50% of the total building cost in a new renovation or new construction and still be within the FEMA guidelines. So I did put that, attach that to this board meeting. We paid for an appraisal on this building in order, the city had requested that we, in order for us to get our building permit approved, we did pay for an appraisal and the appraisal came in and the attorneys right now are looking at the appraisal amount because the appraisal amount is not, does not reflect what it would cost if you lost this building. It does not cover what, what the cost would be. However, Housman wasn't waiting for the appraiser to reappraise. So what they did was they went in and looked at the exemptions on FEMA that could be outside of the, of the FEMA costs. And they made sure that they could get under the 50%, which would be called a substantial improvement. And so regardless of if the appraisal changes, even with the same appraisal that we have now, that the building will not be, and that's what held your cost. So the, the total appraisal of this building was just under 22 million and so the guaranteed maximum price had to reflect a building that would be less than 50% of that. I probably just told you a whole lot of information that you don't really need to or want to know, but just know that if you pass this thing tonight, know that you're gonna, that it's gonna meet the guidelines of FEMA. It's not what the building is gonna cost you, but it's the guaranteed amount that they have to get under. So. Did I just say a whole lot of things that don't make sense or...
As far as the proposal or the bids that they have in hand are at a million...
I think it's a million two less than that. There were still like three or four bids to come.
So how do they justify the extra money that they're holding there?
They're not holding any, you know.
I know they're not holding it, but they've got it. They've got it off the table because it's there, but it's not there, okay?
So part of the reason is that when you have fall construction, which is what we were trying to avoid, if we have an early winter and they've got a heat ground and they've, they've got a, they've got a, if weather creates issues, so if they're scooping snow, if they're, I mean, there's a lot of things that come into play when you're doing construction. If there's a hike in steel, which they try to lock their prices in. But if all of a sudden you get some cost increase, you know, you're at the mercy of fuel right now, you know, after what happened this past week. You could be at the mercy of a fuel increase. So there's a lot of unforeseen things that they didn't control. So as far as them locking in a guaranteed maximum price that would reflect a million two down, I don't know if anybody would do that.
I'm not saying a million two down, but it's about the difference of...
So 12.7 is what they're saying right now. Bonds for 12.5. If it does get to the point where it goes to 12.7, then that will come out of building fund?
It's all coming out of the building fund is where, because whenever you sell your bonds, it all goes into the building fund, okay? And so if the camera was shut, no, I'm just kidding. When they sold our bonds, okay, they sold the bonds and the receipts were higher than what the proceeds should have brought because of the buyers. And so we have enough money in there, but I don't want, I don't want Housman to think that we want to pay 12.7 for a building because we don't, okay? But what they're doing is justifying those additional costs on top of it, so.
So what they're doing is justifying additional costs without knowing if there's going to be any additional costs.
Exactly.
Contingency.
Well, but what they could justify is that there's 150,000 more per sewer than what they, than what they had anticipated in the budget.
But they need to, they still submit receipts or bills on, on every...
Absolutely.
Because I guess that's my concern where we're approving this 11,700,000 and, and so is that, that's not the green light, the spend up to this amount. It's, it's, we have the bids for over a million dollars less than that and, and if the contingency isn't needed, we're not... That's not guaranteed that that's what we're, what we will be spending.
That's right. It's the maximum. Should costs get out of whack somewhere and somebody... Should cost get out of whack somewhere and somebody gets a bid that's high. Okay, I can give you an example. We I did another building midway through the foundations, the concrete company went bankrupt. And walked off the project. Well, it costs more. But so that's what I'm saying, your subcontractors, you're kind of at the mercy of your subcontractor. So the bid that you're getting, if the subcontractor walks away from it. They file bankruptcy, they don't, they don't do the job, you gotta, you gotta plug it in. Well, it's not our cost that gets affected. It's okay, so I can tell you on another project, nine million dollar or eight point seven million dollar project. The construction company got upside down 780 some thousand dollars. That's the guaranteed maximum price. I didn't have to pay it. So even though you're getting bids and you're doing your due diligence on each one of those subcontractor bids. What are you going to do if that subcontractor walks off and says, I'm not doing it? That's what you're, that's what you want that guaranteed maximum price for protects you.
Yeah. So you're saying 12.7 and here it says 11.7, that's why. Or is it not?
Well, that's the that's the building.
That's what they have there.
Yes.
Okay.
But you also have your architect fees. So if you look at that.
All we have is that one document with day 11.7.
Well, you have a 75 page document also.
Yeah.
The way I see it is that they've got a project supposed to come in at 11.2 or whatever. And they're covering themselves up for a million two. So they can have a few hiccups. And still be above be above what it's costing.
Be under.
Being on what the project is costing.
Right, but they're they aren't responsible for your architect fees and they're not responsible.
I understand.
There's other things outside of that that are not. But so you're going to vote on this 11.7 for the for a building, but it's not it's not guaranteeing that that's what it's going to cost you. Right now it's less than that. I put the total amount, we had a bond for 12.5.
Right.
But when it's all said and done, because I did not review the 75 pages of.
It just got put up at three, three something today. There's no way you had that.
Not quite close, but.
Like there's 74 of them, right?
Not quite. But bottom line is disagreement with that dollar amount. We can build the building that that has been planned with the funds that are available with the bond that was passed.
Again, you know, you can't let that guaranteed maximum price. That that's not the cost of your building. They can't go over that. And they're going to eat whatever happens. And I can tell you that steel costs can change, concrete costs can change. And if the subcontractor who's bidding that project comes back and says, I bid this, but these are unforeseen things out of my control. That they can add to that. To that sub subcontractor's bid. So even though they're accepting a subcontractor, because the subcontractor can say, I can't do this. I'm losing too much. I'm walking away. Without a guaranteed maximum price, though, you're at the mercy of what they're going to build that building for. That's what I'm telling you. I think you're you know? And every payout that comes in gets measured against against what the subcontractor said they could do it for. Right? So you're only going to pay in the payout. Whatever that subcontractor, so they may have a list of 15 or 20 subs that they're paying this month. And it's compared against the budget for what they said. So.
So we need a motion.
So you're telling me that they're going to build that building for 11.719 something?
36.9 cents.
Yeah.
To the T.
But that I don't want the public to think that that's the total cost because you have fees above that.
All right, I'll make the motion regarding guaranteed maximum price amendment from Construction Manager at Risk for the new gymnasium addition and thereafter conversions to the high school project.
Second the motion.
Additional discussion.
What I can do to help you with this is each month when the payout comes in, if the building committee wants to review payouts, you can come in and do that. Because they're always available. Okay? And but you have a building, I mean, any one of the board members can. Because I know you're spending 12 million dollars. And so part of my job is we have bi-monthly meetings. And so when the payout comes in, that that payout comes on the next board meeting for for payment. Okay? My conversation with Housman was I've been involved in enough projects where I I make the the payment or the board makes the payment. But the subcontractors don't get paid. So they're calling us, asking us for their money. Well, we don't pay them. We pay one company and that company pays. So that depends sometimes the the Construction Manager at Risk will hold a payment until they complete their work. Okay? So but you can be as involved as you want. And there's a notebook that will be put together in my office, just like every other project that we've done. We have a notebook that puts every payout in there. You can see what's been done, who did it, so on. Okay?
Yeah, tracking.
Yeah.
Above or below training.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
You know, every project you want on schedule and below budget.
Or ahead of schedule.
One of the one of the things in that in that big document, they have three phases instead of two phases to this project. Okay, so you should be aware of that because of our start date. There's there, they wanted to push off until fall for the for taking over on the new construction. And we held them to the cafeteria commons area by August 1. The gymnasium locker rooms, October 1. And the renovation to the to the current school, the gym and so on, December 1. Okay? At the mercy of weather, but obviously those are the deadlines that they're trying to hit right now. I told them we we could not back off on the on the cafeteria commons because it affects our scheduling and programming. We'd like the gym for that fall. But early in the volleyball season, having another gym isn't as crucial for us with the four locker rooms as it is for basketball where we need four locker rooms and gyms. So we had to relinquish anything that would be the area that we would with them have another thought or so. When you do this, the reason that we had to get this discussion upfront is because the fire marshal, if the project is in at one as one, then he will not release any part of that building. Okay, and so that's why we had to phase it as phase 1A, phase 1B, phase 2. Okay? So that the fire marshal will allow us to be able to be in that new facility, even though the whole thing's not approved. But you got to do that upfront or the fire marshal won't approve that. There's a lot of those kind of things that are trying to be pushed and negotiated on time and on budget.
Other questions? Sally?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Boba check?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Anusa?
Yes.
Nisha?
Yes.
Priority school?
Mr. Kossig and Mr. Grammer spend most of the time in priority school, Mr. or Dr. Givens and myself. Dr. Leftall sat in on some of those meetings. I did put the agenda and I put the revised plan and the Skyler Board Report in the agenda. I guess I'd ask them if they have anything that they would like to comment on. It's just discussion, but this is our priority school report plus plan for this year.
No extra comments? New people in involved?
Yeah, one person.
They'll still come out every?
Between our two consultants, I think they're about 30 days.
Were there any meetings or was there continued communication through the summer with with the team or with the consultants or just out of curiosity?
It wasn't a lot because KLK had not secured the contract through NDE for Nebraska until late. So so the planning of this year got a little bit later start than the previous year. Every all the dates are planned. Moving forward, things are needed.
I think one of the biggest changes for us is we took a little bit more of a role in looking at those things that place this high school on a priority list. And rather than a bunch of artifacts, which are good, we're focusing on the reasons why we were identified. And then also looking at the data. So we're putting together a dashboard that we'll make public to you. So that you can see the results of attendance and graduation rates. And so we worked with a company out of Michigan State called ECRA. And that will be our dashboard. Dr. Givens is working with them right now. It it's also what we're using to gauge improvement on our strategic plan. Soon as that dashboard gets built. If you'd like, I can send you out some sites where that they have built for other places. So you can see the kinds of things that other schools have on their dashboard. And if you want to give us input and say, you know, we'd like to see some of this data. I mean, I think that might not be a bad thing for us to do is to give you some some options of some of the data that you can look at.
What did you say the name of the company was?
It's ECRA, E-C-R-A is the acronym for it. They might remember the full name.
Well, like what ECRA stands for?
Yeah. Okay, I thought he was high in a pic. Great that he can understand that, but apparently.
I can tell you the website where to find him.
Anyway. So I think we're we're looking at generating that information. Reducing absentee, chronic absentee, knowing where our kids are, why they are, so on. This is the fun part of the meeting, audience participation.
Steven, tell me something that you've done really well this last season. Something that's.
Tell us one good thing.
I just feel fortunate enough to be in the same room with Cindy Beebe.
Well, that's not a good thing. That's.
We appreciate the history of the way you have it. Kids have done well. You're seeing growth in the new teachers. That's working also.
I guess I just a lot of good things, but the thing I would comment on, it's great to see some dirt moving. Point and some things taken off. I think it's an exciting process and a year from now, I think it's going to be a lot better.
Yeah. One of the things, a couple of really good things start the year off. It has been a exceptionally smooth start at the middle school. One thing I'd like to note is Mrs. Kents. She's now got a new bigger office, office with a conference table. And her and I have been working really closely, a little bit on the change, kind of on student service type things. And in that new office, she's already had a couple of pretty big success stories using kind of coaches and kids, getting them back to where they can be successful. Carol, we had Buster and Hope the first few weeks making sure all the medical work was done too.
You in the back?
You know, I'm really happy with Kelsey Elston. She can do this terrific job for us. I highlighted alternative ed for us here on this first one, but between those two, those two programs are an working make a difference for our schools and programs. I feel good about what we're doing and the programs that we put in place. I think we're going to make a big difference.
Me?
That row, here we go.
Well, I highlighted two different staff members between my rural schools and our school program. But another thing that I thought was really neat is the city has promised another $2,500 check to help the after school program with financing. And so that's really exciting. And then I had a guy call up and offer to do a body class for us every at both of my buildings for free. He's not charging me anything for the year. And so between those two things, that's about $5,000, you know, that we don't have to put out the money for that's working in our community. So that was pretty exciting.
It is. Great. Cindy?
One good thing.
One good thing.
I had an eighth grade student that had to finish up math testing and came back and was just being 258. So he was, he was stoked. He knew the score and he was, he was beaming. So thank you. That's 11.3 level plus. So it's a pretty great school. Good things. I in my report, I just highlighted our staff as a whole. Part of the reason that we've had such a smooth start at the middle school is the way that the returning staff has welcomed and assisted the new staff. And you have a staff that is full of servant leaders that cares so deeply for the kids and for the fellow staff members. It just makes going to work so much easier every day for everyone. And so in that view, I could put so many people that's the spotlight, but just over and over again, I saw that. And then with September 11, all the teachers during our time throughout the week had some pretty amazing servant projects for first responders, writing letters, or even just educating kids. Because not only because we're alive when September 11 happened, anyone had to notice. So just providing perspective for them and just how fortunate we are to live in Skyler, Nebraska. It was just a really neat opportunity to to hear the kids talking about their teachers.
Charlie, you awake?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I think this year I've seen more cohesiveness between programs and I'm out in all the buildings. And And we helped one young man who's now a freshman that has had some health issues in the past. And he was the first one to raise his hand up that he was ready for school. And I can't imagine, Steven called to tell me, I can't imagine him standing up in front of everybody and saying he was ready. And he got a prize and he was in seventh oven. When I saw him after that, he was telling me all about it. It was just awesome. Along with that, the same young gentleman got a new F M system that is planted like back here. And he wears it to different classes. And they hooked him up and he was just like a whole new life. I mean, he could hear and that's what we're in for, so kids.
I highlighted the high school administrators for the work that they're doing to keep all the different things happening at high school straight. That takes a lot. I did want to point out a good thing too, though. You know, during summer school this last summer, we highlighted the use of a program called Myon through Renaissance. And it's kind of an online library for students to be able to go, for teachers to assign books and kids will be able to go and do that. We're opening that up to our elementary school starting in November. And that would be approximately hundred kids that we had that actually logged in and used it, they read over a thousand books. Mr. Bobbercheck?
Well, as part of the school foundation, you know, we're all volunteers and there's a lot of extra volunteers that help make things happen there. So I'll lift up Rich DeBauer, who's been, since the start of the foundation, taking on the Labor Day dance. He's volunteered his services to be the bouncer or the security control, which is not, not necessarily a small task, which he's. And he's a professional. He did that professionally and he's a martial arts expert as well. But he's used his time and talents every year that we've done that free of charge. And we, we expressed our gratitude by giving him a couple activities passes because he's got a son playing high school football and a daughter playing junior high volleyball. So he'll be using those passes quite a bit. So appreciate his services and everybody that helps out with that group.
Are you done at all?
That's it.
You're going to have more time.
I could, I could keep talking. There's a lot of good things to talk about.
I guess on my part, what I feel is positive, very positive is I hear the teachers and the staff are working well together. And the construction is definitely a plus because now I can say, go out there and look, there's black dirt out there instead of when are they gonna start? So they are moving on and things are looking up.
Excellent. Well, I'm excited about not having to have, not having to go, but being able to go and enjoy some of the activities. Went down to the softball game the other night, great, you know, great evening to be out. So it's good to see that the kids are getting to participate and, and, you know, we just continue to help for their growth, so.
I'm going to highlight Skylar. City Council and the Utilities Department, Jim McGowan. We took kind of an impossible project when it came to looking at trying to keep this thing on schedule with the storm sewer rerouting and so on. And the city and without Jim and the city and the department of utilities stepping up. It put our project back on, on board, created a better solution than what our architects had envisioned could happen. And what it did was the forty blocks that drain into the front door of our, of our school right now, that's all going to go west and in a big pipe. And so they're abandoning the pipe that goes south out of the school and that'll be so with the school. So it'll help the school, but it'll also help the city in that whole forty block without us having to pay for the whole thing. So, you know, we sometimes take for granted when people step up and, and do something, but this is a pretty major, that's a million some dollar project. And without their assistance, we could never have made it happen, so thrilled for them.
Well, I have to say we have a lot of good things going in our office. I mean, we've got lunch together. We keep ordering stuff. We keep paying bills and Penny is getting all caught up with realigning everybody's pay. So we're going to get paid on Friday. I mean, just lots of good things where we all work together and we don't get to see a lot with the kids. But we do all the other stuff and I'm patiently waiting to be a new grandma. This week sometime, hopefully.
Come on, talk, talk more about your boss, come on.
Well, yeah, he's good too. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I gotta talk a little about both my kids. So my daughter is a kindergartner and she is going through the dual language program. And just coming home and hearing her talk about all the things that they're learning every day, it's, I'm very grateful for that opportunity that she has. Not a whole lot of school systems do here in Nebraska. The ones that do, it seems like all the parents have the same feeling. They, they just love it. And then my son joined the band. So we got to pick a trumpet out for him. And I think that's neat because I didn't have that opportunity when I was a fifth grader. So he did the recorder last year and now he's on to the trumpet, so.
Do you have something to look forward to?
Oh, at home, it's already started. I wouldn't have it any other way.
It does get better.
It is great, really.
Well, for me, you know, like it's, it's been a pleasure to being able to help organize the parents of the trailer court area and seeing that today them see it, you know, handed the check, knowing that everything is running smoothly. And that we're still finding people that they just know about the service and they want to be part of it. And seeing that the number of kids increasing and using the service and hearing those stories, for me, it's really, I'm really grateful for that. And it's what I'm, I just want to highlight today.
I didn't mean to step past your superintendent's report.
No, it's okay. I mean, you guys can read it. I, I do want to highlight one thing, you know, we had an incident happen here at the high school. And it's unfortunate because miscommunication got out. As much as we tried to do this in a professional manner and try to close it down the inside. Social media expanded it on us. And so the letter that I sent out to the parents, I, I sent the board, the letter I sent to staff to try to let you know what was going on. But I think one of the things that came out of it was this, is that if we have issues or situations that happen in school. Number one, we take care of internally. First of all, we, we do it according to our protocol that we have for safe schools. And one of the systems that we moved to this year is called Navigate Prepared, which is a system that not only trains our staff, but trains our kids. Sometimes student use of social media or their ability, if we're in a lockdown, the last thing that we want our kids to do is to text their parents at home. Okay, you're in an emergency situation if you're in a lockdown. But our kids haven't been trained that, okay? Because all that happens in that kind of a setting is that they create a whole lot of alarm. And when you're dealing with something like that, you have to have some faith that we're putting the right systems in place. And so we'll be working with our students on how do we handle whether it's a fire drill. We don't call parents on, we have a fire drill. We wouldn't call parents if we were practicing a lockdown. We wouldn't call parents if we were doing a tornado drill. Okay, obviously, there are some things that can happen once you start getting a whole lot of social media going out of a building. And so unfortunately, this, this past week, there was some miscommunication that, that went. And when we, when we saw that it wasn't turning around, then I met with the high school administration. I said, okay, how are we going to turn this thing because it's growing legs of its own? And so can't blame kids, necessarily blame adults. It just happened that it escalated. And so hopefully the letter that I sent helped clarify it. But just so you know, if we have a tornado drill or a lockdown drill or a weather related drill, that our students should not be on their cell phones, that they, that that's, and we'll train our kids better to let them know that the use of cell phones and media doesn't help the situation. As a matter of fact, it can complicate it. So anyway, read the letters and just, just know that, that we have protocols that we follow in school. And that this program wasn't put together by us. It was put together by a company, Nesbit Associates. He was the head of homeland security in Nebraska, State Patrol, he's got, his company is. And then we also have now just enlisted, we went away from a, a program that was called Prepared Rapid Response. And because they got bought out by another company called Benutize and the system wasn't very user friendly and we were kind of going away from it. And we went to a system called Navigate Prepared because it allows us to be able to have access to all of our information on a number of different devices. And also has training in for not only our staff, but our students. So as you move forward, we will put kids scenarios in their focus group. That says, okay, if this happened in your school, how would you respond? And then you teach the kids at that kind of a setting. Because what they found is that students who have been trained responded a whole lot different than students who haven't been trained. And so just training your staff leaves out a pretty, pretty important group that the students are sitting there, unsure what's going on. And they've actually have had cases where the students made the right decisions and helped staff. Because if you got a staff member who either over or under responds, the students know what should happen, so. Anyway, we're pretty excited about that system. They were out this summer, took pictures of every one of our rooms so that we know which direction the door swings in, out. They took pictures of every, of every room in our building, all the shut offs, all of the fire poles, all of it. And so it's a, it's a pretty great system. So, and they, and they did it. And they charged us for three buildings, but they did it in all of our buildings. So they went out and did the rolls in the preschool as well, so, so we're pretty excited about that. And the cost was less than what the other system cost us, so. So we're, we're not quite ready to roll the whole thing out yet, but Dr. Leftall, how much more time? A day or two or three or a month or what?
I would say a few weeks.
Yeah, well, hopefully by October, so we can, by parent teacher conference time, we should be able to get some system rolled out, so. Questions from you as a board?
So that the student education is with this Navigate Prepared, is that employees of this company coming in and instructing? Or are they providing materials?
They, they provide the materials, so like there is, there is the scenario that they would put out as a company. And then so if we said there was a tornado and a tornado drill, okay, if there was a lockdown or they call shelter in place. One of the things that we did see is that we had identified in our old plan that the reunification center for our students, should we have to go offsite for whatever reason, that was at the, at the Oak Ballroom. And what we found is that we're not prepared for that spot because we don't have internet. We don't have, we're moving away from all of our offices. And so the reunification sites shouldn't be a site where you, where you don't have either resources or personnel. So if the elementary had to move, they'd either move to the middle school or high school for reunification. The high school had to move, we'd move to one of those other buildings for reunification. So we would probably use one of those. We're still working with them on how we would do that. But, but as far as reunification, we were going to churches and then the Oak Ballroom. But through this, we found that those aren't, those aren't good places, you know? Good, but you'd lose all your personnel and you lose all your support. Internet, no. So, so it's pretty important that we still have access to our student information systems because that's where all our phone numbers are for parents and children, so. Okay, I mean.
No, it's, stuff happens and like I said, we have administrative team that's to deal with situation. That's, if there's something that parents need to be involved with, will be notified and it's got to go from there. No one ever hopes to have any serious situation, but same token, when they do occur, we have to be ready to take the appropriate steps. That's what we hope that we have the right administration team in place and they, they have the training to act accordingly.
So are those response plans or procedures, is that, is that online in our policies or is that?
Not online necessarily. The last thing you want is for somebody out there to be able to get in and see what you're doing in all of your, I mean, that's, that's setting your, your system up for some pretty bad. So if somebody on the outside wants to know, how do you do your drills? Why would you put it out to the public?
I understand that.
Okay, and so, but as far as our response, there, there'll be some things that'll be public. They'll see that as far as, as far as how we, where we would shelter in place and how we would do it. You can't share that with others. That would put your kids in what they call, that'd be a suspect, a classification where you've increased their vulnerability. You just, it's pretty serious stuff when you get down to looking at, how do you make sure that you keep kids safe? And so if you let the wrong person know how you do it, you know, so.
Understand.
Okay, I mean, there's want to know and there's need to know. And I think there's a difference, okay? Parents sometimes are in the need to know, that you need to know that we have a good policy and a good program and that we're paying attention to how do we keep our kids safe? I've never been in a district where the number one concern for parents is safety. Okay, most of the time it's educational or whatever. Here, when I ask parents in groups, generally, safety becomes up to the top. You know, so that's pretty important. If we could trust our board members, we may show you the plan. But, you know, again, every time you get on the outside, you're including another group, so.
Membership stuff, we got everybody signed up, everybody had a chance to.
She has a.
Sally, what do you know about, need to know about rooms, you better just sign up for that and cancel something at some point or I didn't mark anything for state convention.
Well, you probably want to stay, don't you? Yeah. So I have to go in and get you registered because without getting registered, you can't get a room.
You can see it's all downtown now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so it's not spread out like it's been, or it's in two or three.
But you still get assigned a hotel room somewhere downtown.
All right, other comments? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I'm sorry, you have a committee report, sorry.
Yeah, school foundation. Met last Monday and October seventh, the nominations for staff in the first quarter would be due. So any administrators, please.
So any administrators, please encourage nominations. So those will be due the 7th and we'll review them the 14th and the 21st, they'll be awarded. Two weeks ago was Labor Day weekend. So that's a number of things going on with the foundation. And I want to thank Dan for giving a school tour for a 50-year class reunion. Sounded like, and he could speak more on that, but it sounded like they were, spent a lot of time in school and asked a lot of good questions. And it was a positive experience. And I'd like to see how we can encourage that to happen more often than what it, what it does. And Virginia had some of the scholarship winners and the staff that was recognized go through the parade. So that all went on that weekend. And I think the dance was successful. I wasn't able to attend this year, but maybe some of you folks were there. So. That's all I got.
There's no, no other business? We will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Move in a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Chuck, you need a smile.
Ah, Chuck, smile. I have a paper. I've already signed these.
Oh, also, yeah, you gotta sign this too, Rich.
I will go through the one in North Pole, but the other one I will let you know.
Okay, that's all right. A lot of times they just go on Thursday for the day. He has.
The 21st, I can't. The, the Thursday, I really can't. I'm gonna check, you know, like, is that possible?